...date of force set lease purchase agreement due to the year twenty twenty five unless it is extended in a manner provides. Instead lease purchase agreements and whereas it is the desire of the Board of the County Commissioners of Paint County to renew, extend, and revitalize set lease purchase agreements for the following described with construction machinery or equipment. Two twenty twenty three cap motor grade one fifty motorators, three twenty twenty three John Peter motor grader. And not others, I'm sorry, I heard that in the air, motor gators. Therefore, it is resolved that the lease purchase agreements dated January thirty of twenty twenty three be in this hereby renewed for the period of one year, commencing on the first day of July twenty twenty five and ending on the thirtieth day of June twenty twenty six and thus prior to June thirty of twenty twenty six, the rentals be paid equal, but not exceed the purchase price of the equipment. Dated today for the lease, the less see ordered seven quarters of Paint County.
District four or district three?
District one.
Okay, gotcha. Make a motion to approve lease agreement for the. I second.
On favor, Brian?
Yes.
And Seth?
Yes.
Alright, so this file, the discussion possible action roadside by the way, ten degree education management maintenance service agreement between Shetara and the Board of Commissioners of Paint County Oklahoma. This is an engagement agreement. They said Max has already read through this and approved it and also need to make the motions on the.
Is this the same one?
Chairman. Yes.
So they changed their.
Eight point two was changed to a million dollars, yes. And that's the liability limits it to how sixty million dollars. There's the one that they changed it and they sent this to back. Running quote two.
I think you want the word.
Right here. They worded it the way that's had in the email. Or what was? This is what Shetara sent me, that I don't know where he gave that.
This is what Sean changed. Changed it to this?
Yes.
Well, what I was told from what Sean has sent me from what Max said, this is what they asked to be changed was this and that was the wording I sent them.
Do you have the original?
The original one was like this, except it just didn't have a four million. I don't know where those bullet points came from like that. That probably just because the original didn't have that.
Did you guys change that or?
This is probably he's come up with. We're worried.
I haven't seen that one either. This is your only thing.
Well, I haven't even seen one, but given how that was understood.
Here it is saying they should not exceed a million. I was thinking. Just to go down.
Sean has said it needs to be a minimum of one million dollars. They have worded not to exceed.
It's worth checking.
This was.
Minimum of a million and not exceed a million.
I'll have to get back and look back at the emails and then I'll have to get back at them again. But I was gonna just sent that with all those other things on there, that double okay.
Sounds like we need to uh make a motion to table this until we get further clarification on the contract for for Shetara roadside right away. I second.
All in favor, Seth or Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
And one of the yes. Okay, by B, discussion possible action agreement bid document fee proposal on bridge one forty five three. Bridge replacement between C E C Corporation and Board of County Commissioners of Paint County. This is down on one hundred and twenty eight West Coil Road. C E C, we've already done the engineering on this and this is for them preparing the bids documents and so forth. Cause what the deal is, is I have a bunch of the supplies for the bridge and then there's other supplies that they have to finish. So they are doing it. So I've been entertaining the motion with being up for the sign on behalf of the Board.
Is this anything Max needs to look at?
This is.
Just depending on. I make a motion to approve agreement bid document fee proposal for bridge one four five three. Bridge replacement between C E C Corporation and Board of County Commissioners. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes.
You didn't put any motions with chair aside.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know it was supposed to.
Yes.
Can I tell you Leslie?
I asked you to.
Oh, yes, with the chair aside.
Yeah, the big half of the chair, yes. You second that, Brian?
Second.
You second the.
Yes, I see.
Board of A, on favor, Brian?
Yes.
Uh Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Okay, five F, discussion possible action road name request hunting bird lane. This is District One. Anything about this? Brian? It's not approved by the Assessor's Office. And then we don't do road maintenance. It's on um.
Is it that red?
It's on nineteenth between Rose and Mean Hill Road.
Is this the red?
Yeah, that's the red that is.
They're just renaming, yeah.
They're just naming that.
Just naming it.
Yeah, we won't take care of it.
Take care of it.
I make a motion to approve the road name request to the bird lane with no maintenance by the county. Road maintenance by the county. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. By G, discussion possible action administration building third floor electric water heater change out using the L A T C F funds.
Alright, this is for District Two for third floor. There is a water heater up there, but it is obsolete and broken and does not work. So um this is a plan and got this quotes for replacing it whenever we get third floor construction completed to have working heated water.
Are you making a motion?
Make a motion to approve third floor electric water here for using L A T C F funds. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
And one of the votes, yes.
I'm sure that in there it was for, I wanna make the doctor has fifteen fifteen hundred.
Yes.
No, I didn't have it in mind and it was mine, so.
By H, discussion possible action purchase agreement for vaccine temperature monitoring system between digits smart sense LLC and the Board of Commissioners of Paint County. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You want to say?
Only if you have any questions, basically this will give us more accurate and accessible reports and readouts for vaccine temperature monitoring.
Can you come and say that up here?
Yeah.
Just I know Leslie, Leslie wanted to ask, but I'll ask for her since she didn't want to.
Alright, so this will give us more accurate and accessible reports for vaccine temperature monitoring readouts. In the event that there's an excursion or temperatures above or below acceptable standards for vaccines. There has to be a vaccine incident report and temperatures, times, and variances have to be submitted to be reviewed and approved prior to using any vaccine that's been involved in an excursion. This will give us, like I said, more accurate and accessible reporting for that. The difference in price for us would be the original equipment which was in that quote and then yearly monitoring is a difference of about twenty five dollars.
Is it something?
Is that bid sent through that?
Yes, it's been sent through that.
Making a motion, it's for four thousand three hundred fifty three dollars.
Make a motion to approve purchase agreement vaccine temperature monitoring system between D G Smart Sense and Board of Commissioners. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
How much did you say that was for?
Four thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars.
Thank you.
By I, discussion possible action subscription services agreement for regulars between motorola solutions and the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, so this is the mass notification system that would be everything from interdepartment communications where each department within the county or each office within the county government can have a system where they can push out messages to their personnel to whole county government messages to people who are live within the county can sign up for it and messages will be pushed out related to weather, evacuation, other major things that are going on in the county. And then it also gives us the ability to send out the emergency alerts, which are like the the amber alerts, but more for like evacuations or shelter place and all that kind of.
The city and still water, they used to have this, do they still have?
They do.
I signed up for it a long time ago, but then I haven't ever.
Yeah, so the schools use it, city and still water uses it as well as Cushing is is, I believe they're starting to use it right now. I know they're they're working on getting set up with them as well.
So it's just gonna overlap with the cities or?
It may overlap a little, but the problem is with the city having it, it doesn't have, it doesn't doesn't include people within the county. So when the city sends out, it's already a warming group. It it's only because it's it's possibly a hazard to still water itself.
Within that city then it's.
Yeah, yes, sir, yep.
Okay, this is sixty four thousand eight hundred nine seven dollars, is this a year?
So how they have it worked down is they have a written in total and then they show it what the year to year would be. And in that it is written out to be a auto grid or a auto renew can pull up thirty days prior. And then talking to Max, the other things that were added to it is that would pertain to Oklahoma law, Oklahoma disputing if needed and as well as mediation in the form as well.
So what are we paying there?
So it would be the year by year line. So I believe it's, I wish I printed it up.
There's the upfront cost and then subtitle thirteen thousand seven ninety five fifty and then there's a two year subscription. I don't see things for one year.
It should be one year, let me pull up quickly.
Oh, it is this twelve thousand, okay, so the upfront cost is a thousand twenty and then that first year would be twelve thousand seven seventy five fifty. Thirteen seven ninety, okay, so that's what we're looking at. It's not, okay, it's not the sixty four. So you thirteen thousand seven ninety five fifty. I entertain the motion with.
Is this, okay. Is this through the sheriffs or is this through us, through the the what we talked about at the?
Yeah, so I'm trying to think which fund it was that it was gonna come out of, but it would be through one one of the account funds.
Okay. I remember probably just didn't, we didn't actually specify, I think. Is that if I remember correctly, that's we didn't, we'll need to specify which account, so probably our next budgets would then be right, okay.
So then it's just getting tabled, so we decide what account it's coming out of?
Yeah. Yeah.
Would you mind if I, Brian, ask Glenna kind of what, cause I forgot what exactly.
Does the budget board have to approve what, did we decide at the budget board what it comes?
I thought it was, I thought it was like the plan was first year was gonna come out of an account and then the next years were gonna come out of possibly a different account.
Well, we.
I remember.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember any, yeah. If you got time, certainly.
We'll table this when you.
Till you come back?
Yeah.
If you wanna do that. Just to clarify, I just wanna make sure, I remember this whole, I just don't remember which specific count. Probably need to make sure we know.
Okay, moving on to number five J, discussion possible action service agreement.
We need to table that first or?
Oh, yeah.
We just.
Tabled, yes.
We need to vote on and we can come back to it since we're still open. Just skip this?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure. Alrights.
Okay.
Make sure Leslie.
Discussion possible action service agreement for thirty yard roll off dumpster services for solid waste. The between San Davis sanitation and the Board of County Commissioners. This is just the renewal for this next year. This is just like where we had last year.
This for?
It's for solid waste for the demonstration.
Make a motion to approve, service group thirty year roll off dumpster for solid waste between Davis sanitation and Board of Commissioners.
This will be for July first twenty twenty five through June thirty twenty twenty six.
I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Alright, five K. Discussion possible action twenty twenty five twenty six Central Oklahoma Economic Development District Co Ed Assessment and Envoicing. That's for District Two to pay six hundred. I think this is just their yearly thing, it's five thousand two hundred and seventy eight dollars.
I believe that is correct, so. Uh make a motion to approve the Central Oklahoma Economic Development District Assessment and Envoicing. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. By Bill, discussion possible action county utility relocation agreement for bridge two seventy seven on Oak Grove over Uche Creek between Indian Electric Cooperative and the Board of Commissioners of Paint County Oklahoma. Yes, this is District One.
Yes. This is a top sharing between us and landowners for moving utilities, two poles on them, two poles on us.
Okay, and then for nine thousand four ninety two eighty two. Part of that's the county's paying for and then the company's paying for the other stuff. So it shows up here.
The landlord.
It's just his company.
His company. Yeah, can't wait to hear it. That's great, that's great, okay.
Same quote Max's, you know if Max is looking at this or presents or at least?
I will say yes, but I'm not sure of that, okay.
Uh we can do a, on review of Max or not?
Is Sean? Sean is listening.
Okay, approve it based on Max agreement, holding that.
And I'm also sure.
We can do that, prove it of that, of that part that Max is approving.
Yeah, something like that. We've done stuff like that before. If he hadn't, that's why I'm sure he does look at it on your guys' behalf, so. He hasn't. Uh make a motion to approve the utility relocation agreement for bridge two seven on Oak Grove over Uche Creek between Indian Electric Cooperative Commissioners of Bond. Max Myers review and approval. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
And one of the votes, yes. By Tim, discussion possible action memorandum of understanding between Oklahoma State University Police Department and the Paint County Sheriff's Office.
It's enough days since they are new chief. We have released some of the. Max has a good chance to study and Max will pull. I believe it's got the chairman's son who had.
Yes, the chairman will have to sign on, they got the.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Oklahoma State University Police Department and Paint County Sheriff's Office on the signature of Chairman and Board. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. By Ben, discussion possible action weekly debate and trans quarterly reporting. This U D?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything you want to add? Or talk about?
We have survived the first year of reporting. They actually changed this last form, added a whole new list of things that they needed. That's why the report is so much bigger. So there's documentation in there this time for materials that we use. And that's what I expect, it's to show that we put the money in the bank and that we pay people. That's what all that before this, so. We're ready for the next round of that, so. We're gonna use the senior providers in our next round of this, it's actually going very well. And I would invite the commissioners to come and see the house.
Where's the house located?
Nine oh eight East Twelfth Street. We are directly across the street from the city, ten sports.
Oh, doesn't that have to park? Okay. Alright. So this is just copy, but you've gotta send, excuse me, for your report?
Yes.
Alrighty.
Just wanna make it, does it stay prepared by me, but it is prepared by D, but we do look it over and we get more in contact with her to make sure. I had a, I had an email and stuff, it was, this was not, okay, it was, but I do, I am over, we work together and we go over together with her, but so it does stay prepared, I said, county, but make him understand that was not prepared, so I would not be that detailed what she's doing, so doing a really good job, but just note that. I make a motion to approve the David Grant quarterly reporting. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. I have, oh, ignorant secret agreements.
One.
So there's one for D one, it's between Justin and Shannon Bush, twenty five fifteen South Greenwood and Mayo. And then I have one for Bonnie and Dylan McCarpe on for Sanger Road between Lakeview and McFarlane. And then I have three of them from O S U for Sanger between Virginia and Lakeview. And Hannah Bush.
Make a motion to approve the.
Ingraham?
Ingraham.
Ingraham Ingraham agreements. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Okay, removal of equipment items from inventory declaration of surplus, resolution twenty twenty five one fifty three. This is a copier scanner. And then there's a resolution for disposing of the equipment, resolution twenty twenty five one fifty four, which is the seven copier version. I entertain the motion with these.
Will you both them together or you two separate?
Both together.
Together?
Just same thing.
Okay. Uh make a motion to approve the declaration surplus for resolution two oh two five dash one five three and a resolution for disposal of equipments, resolution two oh two five dash one five four. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Under Q, appointment recognition and receiving officers for the twenty twenty five twenty six sheriff's office.
Yes. They, everything is staying the same. They are just adding the jail payroll account.
Make a motion to approve the form of representation and receiving officers for sheriff's office. I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Okay. Discussion of Paint County radio system.
Uh everything's moving along pretty fine. Um one big delay degenerated for the Oakland Oak Tower. We're still waiting on a fuel pump, so that's, that's, I think that's on backward. The Cushing site, they got the cement poured and everything there is moving along, so they're very grateful for that, bro.
Did you update on that deal?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good. So let's go back up to item. I. Discussion possible action and the subscription service agreement for the regular. Discussion possible action and the subscription service agreement for the radio alert system, maybe discuss a month.
So, it was discussed to come out the L A T C account. Glenn did say, though, that we would need to get the income, get it encumbered soon, pretty immediately, because I believe there's about fifteen thousand in that account, and the first year is going to be about thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five.
Right. L A or L E?
L A.
L A T C O. Need to make sure, because I just did that.
Yeah, the other one was for fifteen hundred, is that?
I just did the one for fifteen hundred today.
You might have liked bringing it up?
No, it's good. There's not much left, because we used.
Thirteen four oh six oh four.
Glenn just printed these out, which shows the funds forward, too.
That's kind of gold. Was it from the fifteen, fifteen hundred?
So fifteen hundred plus the what?
For the first year, you said it comes up to?
It's thirteen seven ninety-five fifty for the first year, because we got upfront costs as well as that twelve seven seventy-five fifty.
Well, that's.
It's thirteen seven D nine fifty, plus that fifteen hundred that he just did for the water heater, comes up to?
Fifteen two ninety-five five.
So we have two hundred under.
Yeah, oh, it's two hundred and, okay. Okay, you just wiped it out.
We couldn't have planned that better, Pierce.
Doesn't the report say there's fifteen four oh six before?
Yeah.
Or what it says, I can see.
Undercovered right here, what Pierce gave you, so. If that is uncovered, then you add that up, that should be?
Okay.
Right around there. That's what it does. Man.
So what accounts it at, out of that to this?
I, I think the plan was?
Further discussion, probably.
Yeah.
Further discussion, okay.
That other, yeah, I remember, so, yeah. Dang, you got that in just in time, Pierce, because that air compressor was, took a pretty penny out of that baby last week, of her. Holy cow, okay.
So, I want to see a motion with the chairman's son, we have to.
Alright, make a motion for approved triple service agreement for radio alert between Mobile Solutions and Port County Commissioners using L A T C FMs for year one. So, would that be, is that what I said that right? Okay, year one, for the amount of? I suppose it's thirteen seven nine five fifty?
Yeah.
For the amount, like thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents from the L A T C FM for year one.
I second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Oh, so you sent to, on behalf?
On behalf.
The, the chairman's son, we have?
Chairman will sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. And they just told you that, too.
Where you did it, yes?
I was thinking of how quick it came for two hundred dollars, is what I was thinking about.
Yes. Okay. Alright, are we done with the radio?
Yes.
Okay, cash appropriations, none. Okay, discussion possible action, fire department, free message edition request, I have none.
Purchase orders. Purchase orders to be paid today. For fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, one million eighty-four thousand seven hundred and five dollars and seventy cents. For fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six, five hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eleven cents. And blankets for August are one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. And then for payroll, I have for craniums, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-five cents for taxes, two hundred and twenty-four thousand thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents for payroll, eight hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents for Brian, total of one million three hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve the purchase orders. On the signature on behalf of the chairman.
No, just this one, it's ready.
It's on, I second.
You're signing it.
Signature.
Do you say?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Okay. How many, oh, yeah, how many reports of all these?
I'll have one next week.
I have none.
Let's, you think we can publicly announce this from the board? Can we publicly announce this from the board?
Next week.
Okay. Discussion possible action on utilities permanent to the crossing. Do you have any, okay, I have two. They're both from fifty-one East Water. One is on playgrounds, sixteen hundred foot, east of, or, of Lakeview, parts of Lakeview, and then the other one is on East Forty-Seven, and Rush Creek, East of Rush Creek. I make a motion to approve, permanent.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, go ahead.
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Round of votes, yes. Any new business? Okay.
Are you?
I think you did a new comment from the yard.
Yeah, so that was, so that pretty much is from labor, labor use, from stories.
Yeah.
I called her after I told her stuff, she made.
Not you.
I think Barbara Gangs.
You know, I called her. I thought, is she in the back door?
Yeah.
Is that your shoe?
She should be here. I'm missing that, and it's a, yeah.
Yeah. I'll probably call her and say, no. Because I mean, you know, one that says you're going to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you had said something about me, something.
And what I may try to do is I may. In the screenshot. It'll be nice to get email and that, but just, you know, next time I know you're gonna screenshot it, yeah, since you've got.
Copying to her, too.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we have to go.
Oh, yeah.
Show what's.
Yes.
Where does it go?
Okay, so like everywhere, and I don't want to sit somewhere long, after moving, if I could keep from doing that, so.
So, I see that question about this.
Yes.
So, did they, because I'm trying to see if they can make email, actual check, check. Do I just get the treasure mail address, or treasure mailing address is on the, what?
That one. Here, three fifteen, sweet four oh one. Well, so, so, her accounts and my account are two different things.
Yeah.
So with her, yes, she could probably, she could probably do that. I would just have to know.
Where it goes.
Yeah.
You sent her examples of your stamp?
Yeah.
Okay. Because when female.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, okay, so that grant I'm talking about, it's from one of the water companies.
Oh, okay. So it's not a government.
It's not a government grant, yeah.
Okay.
But I'm assuming that would probably still have to do it separately.
On my day.
Yeah, I can touch her.
Right, yeah. Well, I just thought I had this information, maybe that's, I don't know.
Right, good time, good time.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Something was confusing there.
Oh, no, you're fine.
I'm saying, it needs to how it all works, so.
Oh, so long, I've been doing this for two years, so.
Glenn did mention that, that you can go and sign the, you gotta work the.
Oh, I can confirm it.
Just so, you know, the case you did for the breakdown or something.
Okay, I'll have to pull that out. Thank you.
Thank you all.
To the man, Pierce, excuse, real man.
Yeah. How's John doing with his knee?
Pretty good. I think he probably has a month out still. I told him the longer he stays out, tomorrow he'll have forgotten his job, you know?
You don't sign that one, that was just a lot of.
I agree.
You don't have to sign it?
Yes, okay.
Look like an asshole.
I'm just checking, because I'm.
Your room?
Yeah.
So she keeps signing on, different ones?
As long as they're all three signed, I think it's okay.
Yeah. Try to end it July, it's crazy. There you go. There you go. Hey, roll. That's the old thing, isn't it? I'm sure it's there, huh? Oh. What did they do wrong? Is it when they made the change?
Hmm.
They got a new person? He's had a bunch of, this is not a problem, but it's obviously a date or something, but probably to train them into a girl.
Two boys. Um, all these were in June. She's not going to be on until July. So she didn't come through the last time about July. She's not free.
Was it your turn? Or was it you? I just said we would sign it somewhere.
I think, I think anything about signing, I think. It's my copy, it's very delicate. I think you have those two besides, and then come one of these. I don't know. Um, I don't think you say you want to sign, saying you acknowledge that, like on the last page, coming those pages. Where the last page. That's why I'm doing it here. Maybe for the age.
Want to make air?
No. It's only past this, and I don't know.
Would you say sign it?
That last page is the law with.
Um.
Wait, what's that?
Do you replace yourself with a Chinese file?
Oh, okay.
Cause your final thing is to, you know, cause we're gonna try to get.
Um, that field that peers have, and then you're saying, I think there's, there's those fields now.
Yeah.
I'm not that able to talk field.
It's gonna be closed, so.
But you, oh, I always can't make it there, it's time even.
You see where it's at? Yeah, yeah, come on, bring it in.
On the way.
You should probably sign that part off. Okay. I want to take this to adjourn.
Take caution to adjourn?
See.
Don't favor, I mean, yes, I want to take care of the thing. I guess that yours still pays. If you can tell under.
I do, yes. Thank you so much. For your time and your consideration, for being nice to me. Okay. Do what? Why am I hungry? Is there food in there? You guys got food besides candy?
Yesterday we did, but not today.
Which you have yesterday?
Uh, I made homemade zucchini bread.
Oh, no, I got some of that.
Okay.
I got some of that. Alright, see you, sir.
See ya. Go back to town.
Okay. I'll call Zach on that thing, and I'll talk about Ron with that thing, the.
Yeah, I'll tell him you should send Joe helping with that.
The, the thing that we tabled. So I don't, I didn't, I don't understand all that, cause that's, that's your guys' area, you can table roads and utilities, and I don't. I don't. So.